Yeah, my, it's my day tag.
Last been a change of plans.
Um, please, please join me in prayer. Dear God, thank you for this opportunity for us to come together tonight. Help us to be considerate of the concerns and issues of others. Help us to be wise and judicious in our, in that consideration. Um, thank you for the opportunity to have the citizens before us to watch us as we do our work. Dear God, in your name, this is what we ask. Amen.
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 I, I would preach to the people. And we have to say it somewhere. And for which it stands, one nation under God. And with this all, with everything we need to assist for.
Yes.
We'll call the roll.
It's Chinda. Councilmember John Dworkin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Willie Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Raisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Saw. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. I did meant to mention that this is also Yan Kapoor. Holiest of days through tomorrow, or was it tonight at midnight, Tara? Tonight, tonight at midnight, yeah.
Sunset.
Yeah, the minutes have set sundown now. September 11th, 2023, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none from council, we shall proceed. Uh, let's see. Citizens who wish to talk, to speak to council, I think we just had the, on the item on the agenda. Okay, do that. All right, we have a couple presentations tonight. Okay. Parking and facilities. Thank you, Bill.
Hello, Mayor White.
You always bring good, good news and good things to see.
Yes, that's what parking tries to do.
Everyone's favorite topic.
Well, in this case, we're bringing a innovation that we were able to roll out last week. It is a real time count for availability in our parking garages. Um, if we can pull up the, we're working on it. But what it does is two different types of counting that you do. We do transactional counting, which is through our lanes. Gives us information on monthly, residential, hotel, those types of, that type of data. And then what we just implemented was a simpler one. Just cars that go in and out and give us a count of how many spaces are available in the garage. We are able to then set it so that we can protect the many, many agreements that we have. Hotels, businesses, monthlies, so we can reflect a real availability. So that when it actually goes to zero and somebody looks at it, we do know that there are 50 spaces or so available to fulfill our obligations with the agreements. So it is a wonderful, actually coming up for the Fall for Greenville. It is just a link that we're able to access. It's in real time. It updates every 30 minutes. And you can go to it when you're coming downtown. It'll give you, it'll be green if it's 100 or more spaces. Yellow if it's in between 100 and 10. Of course, red at zero. Um, it's on the parking website.
And by the way, Bill, that River Place Garage where you have the individual spaces, that's awesome.
Yeah, that, the other technological advance that we had was the parking guidance system. So it looks like it's coming.
Which, which garages are coming next, by the way?
Uh, not sure yet. Uh, place was unique because it has so many pockets and hidden areas and not sure whether to go down, whether to go up, go across. So that one was better. Most of our garages are straight up and straight down. So we'll look at someplace like Richardson or Spring where there's a cut over midway. So you're not necessarily just going by the empty spaces as you go up.
It helps with the traffic too. People see that they're all taking, they're not going like snails through there. So it's a good thing I'm in here. Okay, we have a presentation.
I think it's coming up now.
We think that work issue or find a dismat from the city network blocking us.
In the meantime, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, you go ahead, Jim. Ask questions.
Um, first of all, thanks for, for what all that you do. Um, it is a great service and I appreciate all your work and your team's work. There was a couple of questions. Um, there was a leak in the River Place Garage, not caused by us, but apparently the people above us. Did that ever get resolved, do you know?
Um, I will say that the master association has taken a very stern stance and is moving forward. I was just as surprised. Yes, they had taken the stance, they've taken it away from the homeowners association. They're handling themselves and are in process of getting that taken.
Okay, thank, thank you. And then the second, I guess, comment I have is there are times when people are looking for parking and really just don't realize that there's tons of parking if you just look one block off of North Main. I am certain that we have done PSAs and communications. I don't know to what extent, but if we, if we're not doing as much, we should do more. And if we're already doing a lot, continue doing that. Because again, to the mayor's point, that does get people off the streets and it's more convenient for people to recognize it. I had someone not too long ago that said, yeah, I just can't find any parking. I said, well, I wouldn't find a parking either if I was looking on Main Street.
Right.
There's parking garages, you know, within a block here.
And there are, you know, signs kind of get lost, but there are signs even when you're driving down Main Street that say, have the, the P that points you down every street, just about that says that it's right there. Um, but to your point, we do have plenty of parking available in those garages. Most of the time, now Fall for Greenville, we might not, at least at certain times. Most of the time, we have plenty of parking available.
Yeah.
To be able to enjoy downtown.
We all do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And Richardson stays free weekends.
Yes, it does.
What city does that? Now, are you ready for favor?
I think we should move on to the EDSM, Mayor, and we'll come back.
Thank you.
Paul, you don't have one.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, sir, I'd like to give a summary and an update on the engineering design specifications manual. It's a thing now, so we've got a, it's been about 15 years. So since this has been updated. And before I get moving any further on with the engineering piece of it, I have to thank a huge team. So the entire engineering team, obviously, planning was, was very much involved as well as our mobility coordinator. You can imagine all of the debate and discussion that we have on how to, um, make our requirements development friendly, neighborhood friendly, safe, and forward thinking. Um, and so all the way down to the details of, you know, inches of how sidewalks and streets, stormwater, wastewater, those sorts of things are, are to be built in our city. Um, this is what this, this manual addresses. So, um, if I could move next slide, please, thank you very much. So there's no way that we're going to get to all of the components of the EDSM in this short time tonight. I think it's a little over 400 pages, 430 pages, something to that effect. Um, but there are, uh, obviously some, some, uh, big categories and I want to show them to you tonight on the certain things that maybe have changed the most and might have the most impact on our day to day here. Obviously, streets is a big one. Um, stormwater and traffic impact is what I'll focus on this evening. But the EDSM has, uh, you know, erosion control permitting, plat subdivision, street sidewalks, um, landscape and, and street trees, stormwater and wastewater components, right? So, um, I'll focus in on a couple of things here. Feel free to interrupt and ask questions at any time. Um, so when you have to establish a road network and requirements for all our streets, you have to classify what a street is, right? And so there's four basic street types. Thoroughfares, districts, neighborhoods, and alley. And we have assigned every roadway in the city. Um, one of those four main categories, there are subcategories within each one of those street types as well. Um, and I'll dive in a little further here. Next slide, please. So thoroughfares being the largest, right? Thoroughfares being Pleasantburgs, Lawrence, Mills Avenue, major corridors, high traffic volumes. Um, they're often our gateway streets. Um, and so, uh, you'll, you'll, you'll hear a little bit later on about how we, um, consider pedestrians, we consider bike spaces, you know? And so when you see all these different street types and you see how a thoroughfare is designed, um, each street corridor is specific, right? The pedestrians on the thoroughfare is different than pedestrians on a low volume residential street. Uh, thoroughfares will have, you know, more or less 12-foot travel lanes. They have the highest bike protection, um, and multimodal pedestrian, um, access on either side. So next slide, please. So district is the next street type that you'll see. Um, those are, um, neighborhood streets and thoroughfare connections. Um, they're often multimodal and mixed use, right? So think Augusta, think Park Avenue, and they have different, uh, subcategories as well, right? Three lane, uh, two lane, Main Street, and, and one way. Um, uh, next slide, please. And so I only included just a couple of select details, right? Tiny, uh, text and dimensions don't really go very well in a, in a large presentation like this. So just to give you an idea of what, what the, the details do look like. Um, so this is a, a, a mixed use, district mixed use for two lane. Um, we have, um, parallel parking on either side of 10-foot travel lanes, protected bicycle zones, uh, green zones for vegetations, uh, and eight-foot minimum, um, pedestrian walkways. Um, so you can have in a district street, you can have, um, a corridor of vegetation and street trees of green planted grass, but you can also have, uh, pavement with, uh, you know, street trees and street pits, uh, throughout your district streets as well. And so you'll find those kinds of nuances and details, uh, for each street type as well. Moving on, if I could, next slide. So we'll just make our way down into the neighborhood streets and these will be the, the majority of our brand new streets, right? Are going to be neighborhood streets. Um, and we had a lot of discussion on how the dimensions and how, uh, these new streets are going to look and how they're going to function and serve our community. Um, obviously, uh, parking, um, the safe mobility for both pedestrians and bikes are, are, are highly considered as well as, um, you know, travel, um, safety. Uh, go ahead and, next slide, please. So yeah, another one of these details, it's hard to read from the back, so apologies there. I just wanted to kind of give an idea. Uh, this is a neighborhood load density, right? We're probably going to see this the most. Um, and so this is where you'll see a lot of our neighborhood streets where we have to consider, um, uh, fire access and things of that nature, the primary access for, for homes when, when a new neighborhood is built. Um, so this is a 28-foot curb to curb width that provides safe fire access as well as on-street parking. Uh, next slide, please. And then of course, um, is the alleys. So we used to use the term alley for a very long time as a sort of like the smallest of primary access, uh, with the new development code and this. Uh, alleys are now secondary access, right? So they mainly will provide access to rear of a building. It won't be the primary, you know, fire access road for, for, uh, for access for either commercial or residential. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, um, sidewalks and bike treatments, as I mentioned earlier, every, um, every street type has its own specific strategy for, for protecting pedestrians and protecting, um, bicycle traffic. Um, and you'll see the six, um, graphics there, level one through six. And so when a new road is coming in or, or a retrofit of a road is coming in, then you look at the, the certain requirements for what level of bike protection, uh, is going to be required. Um, and so you'll have these different levels and you'll have requirements for dimensions and building each one of those levels. So that's new. That's something that we haven't had, uh, before, no. Um, next slide, please. So improving existing streets was a, is a huge challenge, right? You can, you can create an ideal situation all you want with a new road. Uh, but if you have limited right of way or you have, um, you know, limited topography or, or things of that nature, a big challenge that we had with the, with this DSM is how are we going to address existing streets when developments come in? Or we have, say, a capital improvements project where we're coming in with, with new paving and we are recreating that nature of a street. Um, with this DSM, we, we were able to, to pull from a lot of other examples throughout the country, um, and, and tailor it to a Greenville specific, uh, kind of strategy. And so we actually have priorities now. And so it's, it's a way that we can prioritize that sidewalk and multimodal space will be accommodated along with the travelway and then parking and then a median, then, you know, other things of that nature. And so this is another, um, kind of a new, uh, function that we haven't had before as a way to actually, um, improve these existing streets we didn't have before. All right, next slide, please. Um, traffic impact analysis is slightly different now than what we've, we've, we've had in the past. Uh, I'm sure you, you've been, uh, aware that we've had a, you know, a level of service D or we've gotten to a certain point where the road or the intersections, the delay at the intersection can get so bad and the last person in that makes it to the D minus is going to have to step up and do a huge project. Well, well, now in our DSM, we have a way of addressing, uh, if it's a 10% delay, that we can require the mitigation to address that 10% delay. So if you're at a level B, you're not off scot-free and you have to wait till it gets really, really bad. If you're at a level B and you've delayed the approach to an intersection by 10%, then you have a mitigation requirement.
Can you, can you put that in 101?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. So, so, um, when you're driving up to an intersection and you have to wait one second, well, that's a good thing, right?
You mean for the traffic signal?
If you have to wait, yeah, before you can, before you can, you can make a turn. You have to wait just a second or two. Well, that's a good thing. That's hardly a delay at all. If you have to sit there forever and ever and you're missing cycles and cycles, well, that shows that that intersection is struggling to keep up with that traffic. So you're actually going to get a, a level of service that's a, that's a lower grade, right? And for years now, we've had a threshold at a level D. If someone comes in and does work and they're at a level C and their proposed condition is going to keep it at a level C or maybe even maybe a level D. We've, we've allowed that to continue. If it got worse than a D, that's when the traffic mitigation requirement would kick in. But what that does is that kick, that makes that last man in come in.
The, the, the last business that lands on that road is paying for the transgressions of all the development that came before it, right? So the last one in clips the wire that makes that intersection go to a D rating or even beyond a D of what we tolerate. And so they are, in the current, in the way we've been doing it. So then that business or that, that project becomes responsible for doing the mitigation to improve it to where really that deterioration occurred over time through multiple businesses or developments coming along, but not tripping the wire. So we had a system where last one in pays for the mitigation and that's not really, it shouldn't be that way.
Yeah, it's not fair and it's sometimes an impossible lift for somebody to, to get back to where, you know, a, a good condition could be. So, so now we have a way to incrementally mitigate impacts as things come in, when the traffic analysis shows that. Okay, I'll do the last, um, slide, please. Stormwater, um, um, lots has changed in stormwater, but more or less we've, we've become, uh, uh, sort of a, a modern, uh, requirement, uh, in terms of our stormwater regulations. There's a lot more detail on what's allowed and how to implement, uh, the, the types of, um, uh, stormwater controls that we know work and, and the types that we are encouraging to, to develop in the city. All right, with that, I know I had to rush through it a bit. Anybody have any questions for me right now?
We just wanted to give you a preview, just to kind of set the context for you because this document is a technical document that will go before the planning commission for public hearing at their October 5th agenda. It is a com, it is an appendix to the zoning ordinance that was passed in July. And this document, because of it being a technical document, is under the purview of the planning commission per state law. So it will not be back and forth in front of this council. So the idea was to give you a preview of what's going to the planning commission at the October 5th, 5th meeting. Yes, Councilmember Dworkin.
The fire codes and building codes are often just adopted from federal government, correct? Or the international building codes or whatever that is?
With some modifications through our state.
modifications. Are these also, do these, have these also trickled down from the federal government and state government and we're, versus all us?
This is all the city of Greenville.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a couple of comments, but dovetailing on that, um, for four years now, I've heard about the travesties of hammerheads with regard to fire in terms of that issue. Is that issue addressed in the near?
Yeah, we got to have, um, our, our, our fire professionals take a look at our DSM. So we've, uh, we followed suit on what, what they like.
Okay.
On this and, and there's a few of the Penix D, uh, fire code that they don't like and so we didn't include those.
Well, and I, I have no doubt that the PC will drill down on that because that's been something that, that they've commented on regularly. Um, I asked earlier today, so I see this as the, like our, our code, 470 pages, was form and how things will look going forward. The engineering design standards manual, fondly known as EDSM, is, is how it's gonna be built, right? How do you build something according to our codes to make the look of what the overarching Greenville development code wants? So I'm thrilled to hear about the points you made in this so far, Paul. Um, I did ask about, in terms of our intersections throughout Greenville, which we now, which we know, very few of them do we own. Most of them are state owned, right? But I would ask staff to continue working on to present to us at some point when they're ready, understanding this is a big project or a big lift. You know, I would love to see a histogram, and I don't really care, you can do box and whisker or whatever you want, of our intersections and where are we on our A's? We rate them by letter, A, B, C, D. You know, how many As do we have? How many Bs do we have? How many, you know, how much are we tipping the scale towards D's? Because over time, as development has occurred, you know, you could have a, a business come in and say, oh, well, I, I'm not going to generate more than 100 trips per day. The magic trip number was 100 trips and, you know, plenty of people come in and say, nope, I'm only 99. I'm 99, so I'm under the mitigation level. Well, over time, we've probably created a lot of intersections that are functioning at a very, at a low level of service. And I think we need to be aware and looking at where are we on the scale. But I'm very optimistic. I have full faith that y'all looked at this so well that, that this will represent a, a turning tide in terms of how we address traffic challenges as development occurs and, and what, what mitigation does get triggered and when.
Thank you. I think most of the time that we receive a lot of comments, um, related to stormwater and traffic. And this document, while technical, is meant to be a compliment to the new zoning to really address issues that you all receive, the, probably the most comments from your constituents about related to stormwater and traffic. So thank you for indulging us tonight to have a few minutes to present about what is coming up on this document and so that people who are interested know that this will be going to the planning commission October 5th. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, next is recognition appointments. We have the youth commission appointments. Uh, let's see, Julia and Julian? Happy to have you come forward. You have some appointments for you, for us? You with the school year?
Good evening. My name is Annika Kirby. I'm a senior at JL Mann and I'm serving on the youth commission this year.
Okay.
My name is Jack Burns. I'm a senior at Greenville High and I'm also serving on youth commission this year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So we would like to issue some recommendations for the youth commission, but before we do that, we wanted to share that the youth commission met last month and we just discussed expectations and opportunities for this year. Everyone is very excited to serve. Uh, I personally am excited to serve to learn more about local government and to also recommend, you know, changes that young people like myself want to see in the city. And tomorrow night, we will hear from and provide feedback with Michael Frickson from Planning and Development Services concerning the city's sustainability programs and initiatives. And that is a big topic of interest to many of the people on youth commission. So please keep us in mind for future opportunities like that. And now we'd like to go ahead with our appointments for this year. So please stand as we call your name. Lily Flores from Greenville High School.
Evelyn Simmons, JL Mann High School.
Rashica Taladi, JL Mann High School.
Clayton Williams, Greenville High School.
Charlotte Pasco, Greenville High School.
And Natalie Mecklenburg, Greenville Tech Charter High School.
Okay.
Those are all recommendations.
Thank you very much and thank you all for offering yourself for this, for this opportunity. We really do appreciate it. Hope you, you'll learn a lot through the process. Uh, council members, do you have a motion?
Second.
Everybody, one time now. Motion. Opposed, ice handed.
We may be staying afterwards for, are we doing a picture?
Officially designated.
Stay for a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, don't leave us too early tonight. We had a good meeting tonight to listen to. Yeah, some good stuff, some good stuff. And we'll, we'll take a few long. Okay, thank you very much. We have the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Second, on the consent agenda. Clark, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Raisington. Councilmember Saw.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. New business resolutions, first and final reading.
Normans who appropriate $1.3 million from the Capital Projects Reserve and the Capital Projects Fund for the acquisition of a parcel and improvements thereon totaling approximately .154 acre of real property identified as 15 Reedview Drive.
So move.
Just one second, gang. All righty, and a motion in a second. Any question? Clark Caldwell.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl?
Upstart.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 14A, second and final. 15A and one absence, one abstention. 15A.
15A has been removed from the agenda on request of the Planning Administration.
I couldn't hear. I'm sorry. What happened? I couldn't hear.
Um, item 15A has been removed from the agenda for this evening on request of the Planning Commission. An ordinance to enter into a development agreement between, between the City of Greenville and Mill Village Ministries for the design and construction of public improvements on 1180 and 1186 Pendleton Street and to appropriate $381,000 for the project.
So move.
Move.
Section second.
Hi, I'm here this evening to present a proposal from Mill Village Ministries regarding 1180 and 1186 Pendleton Street. Uh, this is in the village of West Greenville. Um, just want to give you an overview of some of the projects that the city has taken on along Pendleton Street. Uh, you can see Phase 1 is a red line. Uh, the blue square is parking lot improvements on Branwood Street. Uh, the green rectangle below the big giant red dot is the plaza. And the green line along Pendleton Street is also a streetscaping project. Um, the giant red circle is actually the public art and the dotted line was the road modifications on Branwood. Uh, and then also the blue line is streetscaping. Um, you'll see down in the corner, the purple square and the yellow dotted line is the project that we're talking about this evening. So just wanted to give you an overview of some of the projects that have been taking place in the village of West Greenville. Um, to date, total investment is 30 million, a little over 30 million. That includes both private and public investments. Um, that includes our facade improvement program that includes development agreements and the previous streetscape projects that we talked about. Um, you can see the larger development, redevelopment projects total around 16.7 million. And the facade improvement program is actually totaled around 9.2 million. Next slide, give you a little overview of the location.
I'm sorry, Olivia on the back, I'm sorry, last slide, where is, I'm, I'm sure it's here and I'm just not seeing it. Which one was the Flatiron?
Um, Flatiron is the red triangle.
I know that, but so that's, okay, let me, I'm getting it to your next.
The investment page.
The Flatiron, we'll, we'll talk about the development agreements as we move forward.
I was just giving you a big overview of that. Okay, go ahead.
Um, that would be the, but the, um, there's also, I think, there was a facade improvement investment and the development agreement on that project. Um, regarding the application from Mill Village Ministries, Dan Widenbener is here. Um, he's the executive director. Hi, Dan. Uh, he's here if you have any questions. Um, basically, the total investment, including property acquisition, is 5 million. The renovation portion, they expect to be around 2.5 million. Uh, the request for sidewalk improvements and streetscaping for that portion, which is two parcels, is $381,128. Again, you can see Village Ranch, bicycle shop, and then the, the spot beside them, beside that is the little house that was used for a restaurant. Uh, currently, Mill Village Ministries has Mill Village Farms, Village Ranch, Village Launch, and Mill Village Ministries. Uh, Village Launch has been particularly involved with the city as it's a women-owned and minority business training center, which is very important to the city and particularly the Economic Development Department. Plans for the hub include, for the 1186 Pendleton, which is the larger building where Village Ranch is located. That's a $14,000 square foot, or 14,000 square foot renovation. Uh, they have plans for a 7,000 square foot new building and between those buildings will be a plaza, which will be privately funded. And they will host events for small businesses like the market that we had at the Greenville Drug Game a couple of weeks ago. 1180 Pendleton is the house, which was formerly a restaurant. And they have plans to turn that into a restaurant incubator, which is a nice compliment project for the affordable retail program that we've been working on for the woven project. Um, regarding this project, they expect that, um, they have 20 full-time Mill Village Ministries employees, 20 part-time at-risk employees employed and receiving training. Uh, one of the, the issues in the neighborhood in that community is unemployment. So they're working really hard to address those issues. Um, and over the duration of this project and as they begin to implement more and more programs, they expect to create 500 or more jobs through small business training and youth workforce development. So that's a pretty significant impact on the community. And I understand we've gotten some letters of support from the community, which is super important. Here's some images. Um, you'll notice a little, little house. Um, and I think it's a super interesting program. They have a lot of community support to develop that restaurant incubator. It's extremely expensive program and it's, we're very fortunate to have that in our community. Uh, and then you'll see the, the building as it kind of exists now. They've done some work to 1186 Pendleton, 1186 Pendleton Street. Um, here is the rendering, which is a beautiful, pretty picture for us all to get a good idea of what, what the vision looks like. Uh, it is a rendering, so it is subject to change, but this is the general idea. And so the village of West Greenville, these are the development agreements. Um, Po West was a private investment of around 7 million. Public was 150,000. Flatiron was around 2 million and public investment was 349. Uh, Plush Mill, which is on the sort of edge, I guess, if you'd say, a village of West Greenville, but it does have an impact on the area. Private investment was around 6.8 million. Public investment was around 364. So staff recommendation is approval. Uh, there is sufficient fund balance and economic development fund project for this appropriation. So, and after the appropriation, the remaining balance remains significant.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any question? I would like to ask Dan if you could come up and share your enthusiasm. We have a number of people here with Mill Village and we appreciate that. And we recognize them while they're here since they cared enough to come tonight. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'm also joined here by Board Member Inez Morris, who's a leader over in the West Greenville neighborhood.
Red and blue some all, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm extremely enthusiastic. This has been a project we've been working on for almost two years. Um, we think this streetscape improvement does a variety of things. One, I think, just enhances the beauty and the safety in the community, creating safer, more lit, pedestrian access, cycling access and for the visitors and the residents alike. I also think it's a model for inclusive development, which is some of the programming that we're able to provide in this project, including job training, small business minority development, um, food, fresh and healthy food, shared distribution boxes that we'll be doing out of here as well as some of the future work we plan to do down the road. So, uh, super eager and excited. We hope to start construction here in the coming months and appreciate y'all's consideration of support. I'm happy to answer any questions if they're on.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. I'm.
Just to make sure I'm not running any ethics problem, does not include the neighboring property.
It does not include. Okay, good deal.
Okay. And the one kind of, one technical comment I always make, every single time this comes up, is making sure that this is consistent with any future bicycle, walking, multi-purpose trail we have coming down Pendleton Street. Because I'm always a part of a multi-use trail down Pendleton Street.
Yes, we're, we're aware of working on it with engineering.
This, this picture doesn't illustrate that, so I'm going to make sure we don't mess up on that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comment here, but we, we had a motion in second already, right? I believe we did. Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Workin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Thank you.
We're waiting on final permit.
Thank you.
November, Councilmember Fleming.
November. Thank you so much.
Okay, resolutions, first and final. 16A.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and automatic aid agreement between the City of Greenville for and on behalf of the Greenville City Fire Department and the Donaldson Center Fire Department for certain emergency incidents within the designated areas of the city and Donaldson Center Fire Service area.
Okay. Motion in second, second. Chief, you want to say a word about this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the same agreement that we've done with Wade Hampton Fire District, City of Greer and Bowling Springs, all from automatic aid in the southern end of the city, but Donaldson Center and ourselves.
Yep, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Chief. Very persuasive.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Greenville County, the City of Greenville, and Renewable Water Resources regarding participation with the Reedy River Water Quality Group.
Could it approve?
Second.
Motion second. Want to comment, ma'am? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. 16C.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Greenville County, the City of Greenville, and Renewable Water Resources regarding the sharing of water quality data collected in the Reedy River watershed.
Could it approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. 16D.
A resolution to approve the addition of the inclusive playground in Cleveland Park to the schedule of naming opportunities.
So move.
Motion second. We discussed this at workshop earlier, naming rights and, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Right, Charlie. 16E.
A resolution consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park and authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement with the, also known as Project Woven.
So move.
Second. Motion in second.
Okay. Uh, really it's the consent to include 13 parcels located within the city to the multi-county park and enter into an agreement with the, with the company. So.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I, I love this program by the county. Um, it is a affordable housing program. It hits on numbers as far as AMI that, that we normally don't hit on. Um, I fully support this program, but, but based upon my problems with the, the project and I've spoken to the developer about it, um, I'm going to be voting no, but I don't want that to be construed by anyone of, of any lack of support for the program going forward. Um, this is a, this, this can be a real game changer as we go forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I, just to clarify, I'm, I'm going to be joining Councilmember Gibson in, in declining to approve this. I really do applaud our partners over at County Council, as well as Brian Brown with the Greenville Housing Fund who's here tonight, who worked very, very hard, particularly with Councilmember Fant, to develop the rubric for the metrics for these MCIPs to help us developing affordable housing in the city and the county. Um, you know, I opposed the woven both times when it came before City Council as a PD. Um, based on the scale and the mass of it, I had concerns about it conflicting with our soon-to-be-published Greenville Development Code. Um, and those concerns were certainly confirmed once the code came out. Um, you know, it's, this has been a tough project. Um, this project, I, I appreciate the will of the business community to develop, but I have to land on the side of respecting the fact that not a single locally elected leader for this project was supportive of it. Not the least of which is Councilmember Fleming, not Councilmember Xanthine Norris, not Councilmember Alan Mitchell, not State Representative Shonda Dillard. Um, you know, it is what it is. I hope we don't have another one with this kind of dissension because I do think with our new code and the MCIP, we can get and both. We can get good design in keeping with the code, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. We just didn't get it on this project. So I'll be voting no tonight.
I am happy to say that via those comments, I want to go on record in saying I'm happy to vote for this. I think the County Council did a great job working with us on this new arrangement for affordable housing for multi-county parks. And I think it goes without saying that should this, should this city turn this down, it would be catastrophic in terms of our relationship with the County Council and certainly going forward with future affordable housing programs. Well, we will see a lot more of these in the future, opportunities for 20% affordable housing in projects. I don't see how we could possibly meet our goals without the private sector being on board and meeting the affordable housing goals. And this is our first opportunity to say yes to the private sector helping us meet our goals. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay. Next is 16.
A resolution of support to approve the project list for the 2023-2024 fiscal year South Carolina state budget allocation for space, public space upgrades and safety improvements in the city of Greenville.
So move. Presentation by Ms. Lambert. We will now take the.
Yes, that way, I always feel weird sitting if like a, it'd be more standing behind the podium when I just see you. Good evening. Thank you. I'm very excited to present this this evening to talk about how we plan to try to implement $20 million of state funding to support public spaces and infrastructure within the city of Greenville. If we could go ahead and to the next slide. Um, this is how the staffs tried to put together the plan of spending that we are asking for your support this evening. And we're going to run through each of the projects quickly. Um, but obviously, working on Cultural Corridor and Academy Bypass. I think we've been trying to get that project completed in the last 10 years. And so allocating approximately $6 million to do both the Cultural Corridor and the Academy Bypass project, which will be significant to what we're trying to do with connecting Heritage Green to the rest of downtown. We could go to the next slide, please. Obviously, Wade Hampton Corridor.
A little bit.
Sorry.
It's nice to save the moment.
You know, Shannon, on this one, are we complete through design?
We are complete through design. We are ready to go to construction.
And we've gotten bids? We've got bids.
We've gotten bids, yes. And we are within our bid expectations. So we will start that project before the end of the year. I promise you, we're going to have a, we'll have a big celebration. We finally got there. Okay, now I'm going to go to the next item there. Okay, Wade Hampton Corridor Safety Improvement. We've been talking about the Wade Hampton project for several years also. When I started with the city in 2018, we were already working on the Wade Hampton Small Area Plan. And this is a recommendation from that planning process that was adopted at the end of 2018. The city has budgeted funds for this project in our budget, but obviously, this state allocation helps to move the project along further. And so we're excited to be able to continue to work with the community on this project um, through Councilmember DeWarkin's district and his advocacy for this project. So this is our, another project that we're excited to be able to present this, to you this evening for inclusion within our state funding. Next slide. Queen Street Bridge Design. I think that we all know that this bridge needs a lot of work, Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
And this is our first to attempt to move forward on that project, although the city does not own the bridge. We are hopeful that through design of the, of the improvements that are needed for the bridge, that we will be able to encourage additional investment in the bridge in the future to be able to improve the safety of this bridge.
Picture, so to speak, Samarian word.
Yes, it is.
And the thing is, the people who own it wouldn't admit that they own it. We were at a neighborhood meeting and one of the neighborhood residents who lives beside it said, you own it because y'all came and closed it down yourselves and put the signs up. And the West Greenville community set up four and a half years ago, so God is good with these neighbors. Thank you so much. This is a dangerous bridge.
Thank you very much. Our next one is our pedestrian safety action plan. In 2021, council asked us to put together a pedestrian safety action plan throughout the community. And we looked at needed pedestrian improvements along all of our corridors, but focusing on some of our busiest corridors, including Pleasantburg Drive, Augusta, Lawrence, and Wade Hampton. And this allows us to start putting into place those needed improvements for pedestrian safety throughout the community.
Pause on that a moment. That's a lot of money, 2.5 billion to do this.
Yes.
That's how significant it is in citywide it is.
That's right. And it, I think it shows that we really are taking to heart what we said we were going to do in Greenville 2040. And that is focus on mobility and not just mobility through vehicles, but mobilities for both bicycles and pedestrians. And the Pedestrian Action Safety Plan or Pedestrian Safety Action Plan And the Pedestrian Action Safety Plan, or Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, really did that, and this will be hugely significant to have this amount of money to be able to put on pedestrian projects all at once.
And, and remember, it was, it was a, I think this is an opportunity, we had the study that was done that looked at where are the car, where are the hotspots, where the cars are and the pedestrians are, and where are they intersecting, and how can we improve on that, so that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the East North Street Gateway Design. If you will recall, we actually had a private citizen-led group that put together a master plan for this area, and one of the recommendations from that master plan was to improve this gateway as it comes into the city. We obviously have a project that has recently been approved through the city's design review board for that site, and this is just to be part of the design to enhance it. So this is so that we can start the design to really create what we're trying to do through that area as you enter into downtown. It's not only for aesthetics, it's for safety improvements. We want to increase the walkability for pedestrians in this area as they're trying to walk to and from the Bonser Course Wellness Arena, and this design will get us on that track to move that forward. Next, Pendleton-Vardrey Intersection, we've talked about this intersection for a long time in the city, and we have completed our design, but one of the things that we didn't have the money to do previously through other projects was being able to implement the improvements for this intersection. If you know, if you recall, the design was done through our MIB projects, and now this money allows us to implement that project. And this will be a very exciting, goes back to what the mayor was referencing earlier tonight, about improvements along Pendleton Street. And this intersection improvement is necessary to really see Pendleton Street improvements the way that we want to see them move forward and to spur safety enhancements for that area. Next is Augusta Street Undergrounding. As we have completed Phase One of our, of our, how we have done our road diet on Augusta, and we've got an upcoming meeting on Phase Two, this allows us to move forward with also streetscape that can go along with all of that tied all into one project. We've had numerous poles, especially between Cotici and Capers, that have been hit over the years, and this undergrounding project will allow us to move forward with removal of those poles and adding in our next phase as we start to go to the public and ask about, how would you like to see us move forward with Augusta Street?
Did you provide some good pictures of what it currently looks like?
Um, not in this. We're only, we're focusing on the positive.
Augusta Road is plagued by poles that are practically in the street, they're just inches away, so it's a safety hazard. They get hit by cars on a frequent basis, which puts out lights in hundreds and hundreds of homes on a regular basis, so we appreciate this chance for some real money to do something on Augusta Road significant.
Yes, this will be significant, and then when we, when we couple it with the streetscape enhancements that we're planning, as well as looking at Phase Two of the Augusta Street improvements, it's going to really start to change how that corridor functions and feels when you drive it. When I drive it now, I really do feel the road diet. I feel like, I, I feel like I'm in a safer situation, safer environment as I drive down Augusta, and that is our goal as we move forward with our improvements for Augusta. And then our next item is, and our last item, is the Stone Avenue Corridor Safety Improvements. And again, this is something that we've been talking about for a long time. There was a Stone Avenue Small Area Plan from two thousand and eleven that recommended a road diet, and we are moving forward with a study and trying to figure out doing some additional improvements to Stone Avenue to make it safer for both pedestrians and vehicles.
Go ahead, Lillian.
I'm just saying, I just wish it was there when my kids were going to school, because we always went a different way to keep them going down Stone Avenue because of cars. But I'm just so excited about this, this will do wonders for that particular neighborhood and for the safety for all of the homeless people who come to get some food right there on that corner, I'm excited about that.
Yep, and, and it's, I, I look at you, Lillian, and I think, you know, this is really for the kids. You know, the kids in Viola Heritage, East Park, that are just trying to get to Stone Academy and trying to go home without, without having to worry, you know, and having your kids do that without having to worry about speeding, speeding cars, so it's a big deal.
I'd like to conclude before we go into questions or discussion by thanking the state of South Carolina for including the, the commitment to public space upgrades and safety enhancements in their budget. A special thanks to Representative Bruce Banister, who led this way for the city of Greenville. These are, these are projects that are impactful, that will have a significant benefit to our community, and without this funding may not have been possible. So thank you all very much for your consideration, for your feedback to staff, for us to prepare this plan to present forward to you. This plan this evening is a resolution of support. The appropriation for each item will be back to you individually, but we wanted to have a roadmap to move forward so that we can begin progress on each one of these projects for you all.
Yep, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. Underline the, it was only possible through the help of the, of the governor and Representative Bruce Banister, as you said, and being able to work with our staff on setting some priorities.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good acceleration of all those projects.
A huge acceleration for these projects and something that will impact every member of our community, so thank you.
Those are all shovel-ready projects, ready to go.
Ready, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, ayes have it. Okay, sixteen G.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contribution agreement in support of the Greenville Housing Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, okay.
Okay. Mayor and Council, before you, is a resolution to accelerate the development of affordable and workforce housing within the city limits. I have Ryan Brown here tonight, who is the president and CEO of the Greenville Housing Fund.
Okay. Mr. Brown and Mr. Good, good to have you with us.
You're going to, you're going to get me first.
Absolutely, surely.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having us. Matt Good, Chairman of the Greenville Housing Fund, we were formed after the, the housing study in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. We hired Brian in two thousand and nineteen, and we appreciate all the support from the city. The number, and Brian's going to get into the details, the number we want to leave you with tonight is five hundred and forty-nine, and it's five hundred and forty-nine new affordable housing units not existing that we don't have in our market now. So I want to thank you, thank you again for your support, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, thank you, Matt, appreciate you being here. Just want to remind everyone, the Greenville Housing Fund was created, I think, to be nimble and to move quickly, to take advantage of development and affordable housing and workforce housing opportunities. So the three things we do is we invest in affordable and workforce and mixed-income housing. We operate a land trust, and thanks to, in part, to land donated by the city and other land that we have acquired on our own, and we do that so we can preserve the affordable housing on those sites. And then we advocate, and as you know, I was here recently thanking the city and the city staff and our state representatives, because we cannot achieve the affordable housing we need in this community without the support of our federal and state partners that we then supplement with our additional investment. And as you know, we have spent a lot of time working on getting state policy where we need it to be, and, and that brings me to why we're here today. So in front of you on this accelerated funding and the contribution agreement, this will result in the Greenville Housing Fund's ability to have access to thirteen point four million dollars in accelerated capital through a borrowing supported by the contribution agreement. Of that thirteen point four million dollars, we will put one point four million dollars aside into an interest reserve account to pay off the debt, which will leave us with net proceeds of twelve million dollars. And as you can see on this slide, as Matt mentioned, these are the five hundred and forty-nine homes that we plan to pursue with this funding. Gateway at the Green and Riley at Overbrook, and I'm starting at the bottom of the slide and working my way up. Those are projects that you heard me mention the last time I was here, because we are in the midst of closing documents on those sites and expect to have a groundbreaking on one by the end of October, and then the other one shortly thereafter in November. And that will be a hundred and sixty units of affordable housing in the city of Greenville, and within those hundred and sixty units, thirty-four will be deeply affordable. And Riley is the example, we did the extra work to go to the Greenville Housing Authority and get a project-based voucher allocation to support the deep affordability at that project. I want to thank our partners at the Greenville Housing Authority for helping us with that and supporting this project. That contract, just so you know, allows that project to increase its debt by a million dollars, having that contract. And so one of the comments I made recently, the SC Housing, is there are points in the QAP when we're competing for these resources, and they need to recognize that when a project comes in with that type of local support, we got to be able to get points for it. Moving up, Parkside Unity, I think you've seen, and I've got some renderings I'll go through in a minute. We have taken the site that we've been working on with our development partner, James Jordan, and we have been working with Integral Development out of Atlanta, which is the largest minority-owned development firm in America, just to be clear about that. And we're looking at combining those two sites to have a better design of the project, have greater number of units, and, and to use just a little bit more of our investment support to go from fifty, fifty-six units to two hundred and forty-two units. And this will be a signature project of the Greenville Housing Fund and these developments on the doorstep of Unity Park. So this will have a high design, we intend to include some live-work units along Meadow to support minority entrepreneurship in that neighborhood, and I'm really excited about where we're going with this project. Southern Side Senior, as you know, that is an example of a shovel-ready project, but we have frankly been caught up in both challenges with the tax credit program in the state of South Carolina, as well as the financing markets. But I'm happy to say we will be submitting a nine percent loan compensing tax credit application on that development in December. It will, at my prediction, it will probably be the highest-scoring project in the state of South Carolina, and it will go in with a project-based voucher award for sixty-nine units. So the only way to provide deeply affordable senior housing for low-income senior citizens is to have this type of tax credit financing and to be supported by project-based vouchers, because then we're talking about seniors at or below thirty percent area median income. And this will be a brand-new project, and as you can see as I go through some of these slides, before I get to the renderings, let me also remind us that since we've been, since the Greenville Housing Fund was launched, we have completed a thousand and forty-eight homes within the city limits of the city of Greenville. So in addition to what you're voting on tonight, the city of Greenville has also provided funding allocation to the Greenville Housing Fund totaling seventeen point five million, plus the land donation, and the way I do my math, that's just under forty million dollars in support for affordable housing by the city of Greenville. So, and you can see some press headlines here and some of the types of affordable housing that the Greenville Housing Fund has invested in. Now for the renderings, Southern Side Senior Apartments are here on your left and the bottom right. That is the Lytton Rock Plaza in the corner there, that is the project that will go in for a Lytech application in December. We plan to, the other thing I should also mention is as we look at tax credit finance in this community, Greenville County can only get two per year under the QAP. Any county in the state of South Carolina can only get two per year. And so GHF is taking it upon ourselves to collaborate with our development partners, so not only can we ensure that we don't compete against ourselves in the wrong way, because if we do, projects can get disqualified without meaning to. So we want to be very strategic, ensure that we get our two awards a year, and frankly, we want to get our priority projects funded every year. And so we are doing a lot of work to ensure that for this community, and I just wanted to mention that. And then the Parkside Unity, that is the, those are actually garden apartments, even though they look like townhomes, and that's the site located next to Park Place at Hudson, or on Hudson. And that project is approved, design-approved, ready to go. And, and again, we're very excited about combining that with the site across Nassau and doing a much larger project that will have a very high design standard associated with it. Just wanted to quickly go through a couple of these other sites, so Gateway at the Green, this is over at Web Road, and Mall Connector, that you can see the building footprint there. And then, again, this is actually what the housing development will look like. All affordable with units going down to twenty percent AMI in this development, which is pretty unprecedented. And then finally, this is Riley at Overbrook, this is a rendering of this project, and this is the one that has the project-based vouchers and will have very deep affordability within it. And then this is the site, this is off of Lounshill Road, and between Lounshill and three eighty-five. And then, so finally, as Matt mentioned, and I want to reiterate, this contribution agreement will support these new units of multifamily homes, as I've just reviewed. But I also want to emphasize that the current funding we have on hand, we will reallocate to launch our Greenville Community Land Trust. And that land trust will have a goal of a hundred and twenty new infilling single-family homes, concentrating in the special emphasis neighborhoods where we will work to provide affordable homeownership opportunities, because that is the best strategy to combat gentification, and we will target fifty to eighty percent AMI households, and you can see the number on the slide, which means households earning between thirty-five and seventy-one thousand dollars per year. With everything I have just said, I just want to thank you, because the city of Greenville leads the state of South Carolina and most of your poorer cities with these innovative investment supports for affordable and workforce housing. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and I thank the staff. I mean, this is a public-private partnership, as the mayor said. We also have a new development code with incentives built in it for affordable housing. We have the county policy for the special source revenue credit. We have our coalition partners that are in this with us. We have private developers that will partner with us and do market rate development with a component of affordable housing. Having said all of that, I am, you know, and with these numbers, I am very confident that we are, we are on track to meet our goal and our plan, if we're not in fact slightly ahead, but I'm allowing for the market to resist me and our efforts. And so I don't want to overstate it, but I am really happy about where we are, and we can only be here with your support, so thank you.
Got it, thank you very much, appreciate the. All right.
I think.
Well, I just, Brian, I can't commend you enough, and it's been, we've been traveling a long road together to get here. I think that some key things to take away are, we cannot address our affordable housing needs without everyone at the table. And what's just broken loose in concurrence with this affordable housing strategy is the state allowing us these nine percent low-income housing tax credits. So to give credit where credit's due, that would not have happened without Representative Banister at the table in August going to the mat for these, for these specific projects.
That's right.
Also making the case to Representative Banister via the mayor, via Brian, being me around his table, some local developers saying, this is the roadblock that's keeping me from building this project, and him taking that to Columbia and getting these credits. You know, this represents an incre, this is the, the dam we've been waiting to break to start turning dirt at the Unity Park site, so I really look forward to those. It is not lost on me. not lost on me or the community that we will have infrastructure needs around these projects, Southern Side Senior, Parkside at Unity, to support the density we're putting in here. That is something I will be bringing up when we get into our budget negotiations at the beginning of the year. It's not a small dollar, it's a higher dollar, but we are going to need some capital investment to address the infrastructure needs there. And I know fully we'll be able to do it, but it is coming. Last thing I will say is there are some other high-profile projects that we have talked about for four years, that we collectively support, that are, to Brian's point about strategy, we can only do two a year. Next year, just you wait, because he's got them teed up brilliant in strategy of which will score the highest to get that funding from the state to break them loose. So I'm really optimistic about where those are going to be in other neighborhoods in the city.
Just, just real quickly. Great job, Matt. Great job, Brian. I just want to say I really, really appreciate the way you guys have been partnering with the housing authority to get these AMIs down. My past four years on council, there has been a real, like, sea change. I mean, you guys were doing great work before, but, but over the past four years, the work you guys have been doing with working with, you know, other agencies within the, within the community to, to get us to a, we can service super-low-income, you know, people has just been outstanding. So, so please, please, please keep that work up. And a quick question. On the Park Unity project, I'm looking at the numbers and it's saying the 40, 60, 80, is that going to be a county? Okay, just want to make sure. Thanks, sir.
Yeah. Let me just add to your comment, Councilman Gibson, because, you know, I reflect on why this matters sometimes. In the previous contribution agreement that you passed last year for our acquisition of an apartment community in the city of Greenville, as I said at the time, that property had not accepted a voucher since prior to 2018. We have a homeless veteran living there. We have a woman on zero income with a voucher living there. We have a person who was displaced with an emergency voucher that the housing authority called and said, would you take her? She's, you know, that family is living there. We have a special allocated voucher supporting a young woman who emancipated from the foster care system through a special program with the Department of Social Services living there.
Wow.
This is why this matters. This is why it matters when we, the Greenville Housing Fund, are involved in these projects, because we know these programs and we know what this opportunity means to these families. We have an apartment somewhere else where a mom with two kids who came out of Safe Harbor is now living. That's why this matters.
I don't ever, you know, we should never lose sight of this. We've got 549 units. They're not units. That's 549 families.
Yes.
We're housing 549, and 1,048 families that we've provided for already.
Yeah.
So we say units, but every time I say unit, I think family.
Well, I just wanted to mention that to try to bring it to the real point of this work.
Exactly right. But I, I just want to also make the point again, you told, we've talked about partnerships a lot here. You might ask the question, well, how can Greenville do something that no one else seems to be able to do? I mean, the housing crisis is nationwide, affordability crisis. It's certainly Greenville County-wide. So how can Little Greenville, South Carolina, do something no one else can do? To which I say, well, everything else we've done in Greenville, South Carolina, we do things like this because of our unique public-private partnerships. And it's so deeply in our culture, people will come to the table and they, and we've been telling people all along, you just wait. The public dollars we're putting into this, it's unprecedented. And since we set you up with 2.5 million, in the first couple of years, the housing fund, I spent $10 million in the city of Greenville. Like, we were just getting started, $10 million for about 1,000 units. And then in 28, and, and a few years ago, we decided, okay, we're going to up our game again. When you're, when you're ready for it, when you kind of have your ducks in a row, you're ready for it. And you told us about a year ago, you're ready. So we funded you at 2.5 million. And today you're able to take, and you might want to clarify this, the first tranche you say, this is about $10 million, or how much you say?
It's, it's going to be for 13.4 million, but that will net out 12. And we would have the ability to go back and do another tranche.
I was going to say another 12 or 13. So this is still the $30 million plan, to clarify a thing. This is the commitment of the city for $30 million, which puts us so far ahead. No one else in South Carolina is making anything like that kind of investment. We know that. But the really exciting thing is, that's just the start. We, not only the $30 million investment, but it is the public-private partnership. So these have, these, these are real people. And we start talking about 20% in a project here, and 20% in a project there, and 20% in a project there. Those are real numbers, and those are real people. Those are real people. And we have to make a decision in this community, especially in this 20% matter, are we going to stand up and fight for that? Are we going to say yes to, instead of always saying no? And that's a challenge for the entire community. I'm not talking about city council, I'm talking about the entire community. We have to be serious about this. But we have put in place in this LMO, and I think we're all proud of this, we all supported it, we're all proud of it, our LMO, our new zoning code, provides powerful incentives for private developers to do something they wouldn't otherwise do. Look forward to work with you guys and to provide for 20%. So the combination of investment and private parties joining in on the 20%, which I think is the minimum standard, that's what we should be looking for, is going to come together to make some, to help us meet the gap. There'll be no gap of affordable housing in the city of Greenville in a couple of years if we stay on this track. And I have confidence we will.
And I just want to thank you again for your ongoing support of this to this council.
Because, but it is Brian Brown who made me a promise when he first got here, and he said, we have to look outside the box. We can't just do the same old stuff.
Can't do the same.
He said, if you give me a little leeway, I promise you we'll do it. Thank you so much for keeping your promise.
Thank you, Matt, and the board, too. We have a stellar board. We really appreciate all you do. Yeah. Well, all that leads up to our resolution. So all in favor of the eye. Those eyes have it. All right. Ms. Manager, do you have anything further to inform us about?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
I have.
I got it. Okay.
In the Uptown Magazine, Camilla Pittman, the city clerk of the city of Greenville, received a 2023 International Institute of Municipal Clerks Quill Award, recognizing municipal clerks with their significant and exemplary contributions to their community and everything else on this little page. Anyway, and then she also received the IMC President's Award of Merit. Thank you, Camilla.
Sounds like Caesar. She, she wins. She wins. She's awesome. She conquered.
Yes, right.
My wife's not good enough to talk about it too much. Did you have something else?
Well, I did, and I missed my opportunity, Mr. Mayor, because I think you took us to a vote way too quickly on the $20 million dollars. But I just want to underscore, we thanked a lot of folks, appropriately thanked Representative Bruce Banister, Representative Sean Diller had a, had a hand in that as well, the governor's office. But there was, but you were the one that initiated this whole thing. $20 million, you had, and you know, for some of the folks that don't know this, a couple days a week, I'm in Columbia as my day job in the springtime. And so I hear from legislators, and I heard them so many, oh, the mayor called me back about the $20 million. So a great. You didn't, so a lot of perseverance to get that, that will positively impact so many people's lives. I just want to, I wanted to thank you then, but you got us to a vote quick. But thank you very much.
You can stay out and inform the legislature all you want. I did what I had to do, but I haven't. But I appreciate it. Members of the youth commission, please hang around. Don't, don't leave.
Mr. Mayor, before.
Afterwards, and.
Just one, one happy note to end this on, maybe make them blush. I want to be sure to wish our friend and our colleague Ken Gibson a very happy birthday. You don't have to sing, but maybe sing something. Happy birthday. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday, Ken. All right. Thank you.
Take fifty.